Alright, Acton Park Board, November 20th, 2012. Take a minute through the minutes, I'll accept the motion. All three of you guys were here last time, right?
Yeah, good.
And for the record, Gavin's who votes for Arthur. That's for a real TV.
I need you to try and count my neck.
Oh yeah, how so?
I don't know.
Really? Want some clearance? Yeah, clearance is right there.
I know, but I don't want to get specked.
Well, you already told us, again, told us, and we would've noticed. You're hiding behind the post, nobody sees you. Do what my nephew does. Roll up, clean it up, jam it in your gloves. You can all sit back on. How many of you guys do it?
Oh, yeah. Pass it around.
That'd be fine, I mean.
Did your tails give yourself a good tap?
Oh yeah, flying in from...
Oh, she did get it.
She's...
Oh, she said she wanted to.
It's really a bit like a cow rap or something. Is that flying in from...
I forgot what she said. I hope she's gonna bring it for the puppy daycare.
We love it.
Well, have you seen the... Have you been up to see the school?
Yeah. How we doing on the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes or corrections? Robert?
No, Bill.
You're sure?
We had a discussion.
Alright then, all is in favor, aye? All is opposed, nay? Done deal. Now, we'll move, uh... Number Trey on the agenda up to Uno. And, uh, who wants to go as a little overview of what's what there? Home owner, or Tom, or Ken, or what?
Um, I'd be glad to talk about the little red schoolhouse.
Well, what exactly is, uh... What's the deal before, so what's going on?
Chip wasn't here.
Oh, that's right. Chip, um, unfortunately, back on October 18th, um, a distracted driver coming up Youngs Ridge past the Acton Vet Clinic.
Yep.
And I'm not sure if you're familiar with Youngs Ridge. That area of the road is like a boulevard, it's a Y. And unfortunately, she dropped something and drove right head-on into my schoolhouse. And there's a picture coming around about it, showing pictures, uh, that were provided by the Sheriff's Accident Report. And, um, there was a lot of damage to my schoolhouse.
More than 50%?
Could be, could be. The thing is, all I'd like to do is repair my schoolhouse on the same site. This schoolhouse is not a shed. It's a well-loved local landmark. It's not a garage, it's not a deck, it's not an addition, it's not a little business shop. It's not an occu... Not an owner... A non-occupied building. And there is no, um, central heating in this little building. There's no electricity, there's no plumbing. I'm sure, uh, you understand from our last meeting, I'm very passionate about my little red schoolhouse. I apologize if I was a little over the top with my determination on wanting to keep it where it's located and to repair it right there. I welcome the opportunity to any of you or all of you to come to my home to see firsthand why I wish to have the schoolhouse remain on the same site. Plus, if you'd like, wanted a tour of my damaged schoolhouse, I'd be very glad to, uh, take you on a tour to show you how special this landmark is. I feel pretty much I may be the last known taxpayer that owns a schoolhouse right here in Acton. It's not on a national or state historical register. I'm the taxpayer that has owned it for the last 34 years and kept it painted and stained. I replaced the roof with wooden shingles, per information gathered by me from a very sweet and dear neighbor, Ruth Brown, she's in a butter. Years ago, I replaced all the clapboards and hence replaced those as needed due to weathering and sun damage. I've kept the lawn mowed. I decorate the schoolhouse each year, each of the shuttered windows with wreaths, um, over the holidays. I feel to a degree, I'm being punished for my honesty to report that there's more than 5 to 10% damage and not be able to repair on my existing site. The longer I'm delayed to repair the building, potentially, it will settle more, which in turn will cost me more money to repair. And winter is coming. In 2009, I had a perimeter survey done by Dennis Rafferty. It appears over time, the paved road has encroached onto my land about 80 feet for Youngs Ridge Road and the same for Buzzell Road. Again, I've brought for your review my deed, my petition signed by, uh, a butter's neighbors on both roads, on Buzzell, on Youngs Ridge, as well as others in the neighborhood, which would include New Bridge Road. I've brought the Sheriff's Accident Report. I brought stories of, direct from teachers that taught at my little red schoolhouse. Uh, I've got my proposal to repair the schoolhouse on the existing site. I...I'm at a loss if I'm not approved, what does happen? I'm still very reluctant to move my property. It destroys its unique character and authenticity. If I'm not approved to repair on the same site, do you condemn the building? I'm...I just don't know what happens. Dick Neal brought tonight pictures of my schoolhouse. He has pictures of, um, that go back decades and decades ago of how, what disrepair the building was in. And I...I feel I should need to stand up for myself to protect that little red schoolhouse. I have had numerous friends and relatives, and their ideas are rather strong, such as get an attorney, call the newspaper, call the local TV station. I'm just not comfortable about those types of options. I'm truly hoping we can come to an agreement this evening to approve and let me repair my schoolhouse on the same site. Dick also provided for me tonight, he had gone through the codes, and for where my, um, property is located, um, for non-conforming, under 1.4, under 1.4.3 repair and maintenance, the ordinance allows the normal upkeep and maintenance of non-conforming uses and structures, including repairs or renovations, that do not involve expansion, which I'm not looking to expand whatsoever. I just want to keep it the same, uh, footprint that it is right now, not, uh, of the non-conforming use of structure or such changes in non-conforming use or structure as federal, state, or local building and safety codes may require. So I'm really hoping this can... I have information here, I have my... I have my perimeter survey. For example, on my deed, it talks about the back line being 700 feet, more or less. And by the, um, surveyor, it came out to 699 feet, 99.94 feet for the back line. For Youngs Ridge, it talks about, in my deed, that the deed runs, um, 1,010 feet road frontage, more or less. According to my perimeter survey, it has 917.98 feet, but there's an additional 89 feet, uh, almost 90 feet, that, uh, talks about it was there as part of the deed dated back in 1891 and recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Also on Youngs...on Buzzell Road, same thing. My deed states that I have 1,040 feet, per my perimeter survey. The survey has 908, 930.25 feet, but it also, to meet the old deed, there's an additional 89, uh, 83.1 feet. So I do have this if anybody would like to look at it.
So you've got plenty of land there.
That...that's not the question, Chip. This...this is my property.
Yep.
That there is my home. I have a long sweeping field, and this is all trees. This is my little red schoolhouse. But over year...over the years, and Tom has an aerial view, you can actually see how much over the years, I'm not saying or putting blame on any road commissioners or any... This has gone on for years, but it has truly encroached right onto my land. And, um, it says, "See this note," and that's notated right there, Chip.
So, uh, the schoolhouse is much closer to the traveled surface than it originally was?
Yes.
So it runs more of a risk of being hit in the future possibly as well?
Well, not necessarily. It's been there for decades and decades and decades. If this distracted driver hadn't dropped and reached down, there weren't, Chip, there weren't even skid marks. There was no other... I mean, people try to be very careful. I mean, there are others that...
What...
Don't, you know, come to a complete stop at the stop line on it. But I feel I'm being punished just to repair my building.
But should the distance be marked as from the corner...
75 feet from the center line of the road.
From the corner of the house closest to Youngs Ridge Road. I mean, I know what it is, I know what it looks like. What is that distance actually surveyed? What would it be?
Have you got Rafferty's, uh, survey? Or is that what this is?
That's what this is. This is a copy, I've got the original, I apologize.
Is this dotted line the center line of these roads? Is that line in the right of way, do you know? Or is this just...
Uh, let's see. Over here is a...
Is this the edge of the road, the rock wall? Is the rock wall in from the road very much? From the paved area, you know?
It's...it's not far.
It's not far.
Chip, I can show you exactly.
Yeah.
I have an aerial view.
He has an aerial view. Dick also has some pictures from years and years ago, what the schoolhouse looked like, even damaged. It looks better today than it did years and years ago.
Well, I'm...I'm sure it does. I guess, uh...
Was this a proposal to split this lot into two?
It could be, yes.
And it... This is all unlocked though, right?
Yes, it's all unlocked, but it was a proposal that it has been under consideration.
So, how much damage was done to the, uh, to the building?
Quite a bit. Um, it knocked it...
It's on a stone, rock foundation, right? Or is it...
It's...it's pieces of granite slab, Chip. Um, is my picture of my schoolhouse still here somewhere?
Still here?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
So did it, uh...
It...it impacted so hard...
Where's the front?
It pushed the... It pushed the building back about three feet.
One run in, get them one in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Pushed it right off the...
Yeah, if you look at the...
Block foundation.
Yeah, if you look, it...the back of the building goes out.
Yeah.
She toppled my chimney that was down, that completely down. Um, just as you go inside the doorway here, it's like a petition. The petition was damaged, um, you know, and the floor is in very rough shape because of all the floor joists from the impact of the vehicle just snapped every one of them.
Um, what was the last, what was the assessed valuation of the building?
I believe it was $5,000. The, uh...
So it's gonna cost more than 25 pounds, what were you...
Oh, yes, it's very...
So, so there's damage more than 50%?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question? This came up at the last meeting and whatnot, and I haven't been able to find that in the...
Holy smokes, page five.
You know?
Page five, and maybe somewhere page six.
Yeah, but are we talking about, uh, Shoreland requirement?
We're talking about any part in town, including Shoreland, but any part in town.
Yeah, but why do you have these other paragraphs that don't even mention that? It says, it says it's allowable to turn around and, uh, repair it as long as you don't need these things, it's right there.
It's allowable, somebody, but... Is this...
I'm gonna say, when you're telling me you can...
Gee, we have it.
Two parts of the code that it'll...
No, they're not.
Or you pick one another.
No, they're not. They're...anything that's non-conforming, if it's gonna be replaced, repaired, relocated, has to be as least non-conforming as possible. Now, in the event that there is room on the property to set this back to make it conforming, I don't see what...
That isn't what the code says. Does everybody have the code?
Yeah, I mean, it is what it says.
Point 411 for me.
Did you...did you get a chance to talk to the Tom lawyer?
Yeah, and as I was discussing the situation with him, the first thing he thought about was, in the future, if something happens and the town didn't take the opportunity and there was a place to relocate, that the liability was there. And that was the question I was coming to at the end of him. And he...he had already had that in his mind halfway through the discussion with him. That...that would be a liability issue, possibly.
So his thinking would be that...
If there was a place to relocate it and the town did not relocate it, there could be liability for the town.
Right.
The other proposal that I made at the last meeting, or passed it out there, is that from my review and research and going out with the thing here and with the aerial view that I got here, I'll let you look at it. There's plenty of room, that if it's rebuilt, that we could either put some big boulders, you know, dig down in the ground there and make a barrier in front of the school that will not interfere with the intersection or with the view of the school.
Wouldn't it interfere with the sightlines at that corner in that stop sign? It wouldn't block anything like that?
Well, it's saying, really, the stop signs are the wrong place.
Well, it's where it is now, so that's...
But over the years, it's very evident that the town has encroached on our property and turned around and paved, you know, in probably 60, 70 feet or more, almost, you know, within 20 feet of the school. The setback isn't from the edge of the road though, it's from the center line of the right of way. No, but it says, you keep turning around and worrying about somebody coming up Youngs Ridge Road and running into the school.
No, actually, I'm not worried about that at all. My concern is, if there's room on the property to set this building back so that it is not, not conforming anymore, then that's what...that's what the code asks us to do. You wanna make something as least non-conforming...
You're gonna have to show me the code.
Yeah, page five, the bottom paragraph there, that's what I'm looking at.
Well, I'm looking at page, uh, 2, 3, and 4.
Looking at page 5.
And, you know, section 1.4 is non-conformities.
Right.
And then you go down there and again, you know, the purpose, the definition, the repair and maintenance. 1.4.3, specifically, talks about repair and maintenance. And then if you go on to page...
Well, this is a little bit more than just maintenance. This is more like reconstruction or replacement, which is 1, 4, 11, 3, and page 5.
It's repair. Repair.
Is it damage more than 50% of this assessed valuation?
I don't see that in, uh... We're saying 1, 4, 11, it's non-conforming building is destroyed.
1, 4, 11, 3, keep going.
The fourth line down by more than 50%. I'm...I'm not making this up. Honestly, goodness, it's in here.
Well, I'm not making it up either, I just copied it up.
Right.
You know, if you happen to have the wrong building code or the zoning code on the town's website, then shame on you.
No, no, it's not shame on me, 'cause I don't deal with that. That's not my hands. I'm dealing with this.
Okay.
And this is what should be up there, this is what, uh... Okay, this is the latest one that we have. When...when this came to you, Ken, what was, what did you say?
That was my first thought, was the, um, value of removal of damage is gonna be excessive of the 50%. If it was close, if it was... We haven't assessed it 5,000, and the estimate come in at 10,000 or 20,000, I would, uh, recommend having a real estate appraiser go out and do the appraisal and work with them and that. But the estimate's at 75, 80,000, and it's assessed at 5, so it's...
Wait a minute.
That's absurd.
The estimate said 75,000 to fix it?
74.
74.
74,000, not 100, 74,000.
74,000.
That's absolutely...
Tom, I could do it.
I'm intent on that.
Easily. And we'd still be living large. Anyway, um...
On 10 to be 75,000, it'd still be almost double the assessed value.
I get it, I get it.
So, I mean, I didn't use that option of, uh, working with a real estate appraiser and, to me, it was false hope to even go that route. And it's from the center line of the right of way, not the edge of the road, how much has been encroached and all that. That's up to her and her property, where her property ends and...
Well, see, that's why I was wondering if there's some kind of real survey of the road. Because if one side has been paved and paved and paved over time, the right of way is still here. Just because this is paved doesn't mean that's the right of way anyway. The real legal right of way is here. Here's the center line. That's what I'd like to see. If we've got a copy of that somewhere, I don't know.
Usually I'd request a certified plot plan when we do the foundation inspections for these ones that have been relocated.
This is, right, this is stamped?
It's just a certified survey. We'd want, uh, once the, it is relocated, usually there's a foundation done, we'd require the certified plot plan by a survey so we know it meets the setbacks versus having them do it prior to.
Right, right, right.
She has a survey and it's...
It'd be interesting to know where the center line of the real road is.
Probably those older roads, the center line of the right of way is the center of the traveled way out there, the paved road.
Even if one side got paved more and more?
In the general location of where that place is, without getting to the intersection, you could still improve that area.
Alright, alright, alright.
You wanna see what, exactly what it looks like?
Sure.
Dale would be... I'm disrupting today, you know? If Dale would be within her rights to put a, a, uh, ball there or something, whatever, would prevent this from happening again in terms of damage to the building, um, I think that might be a compromise that we might consider.
I apologize, Home, I'm not sure I'm following you.
The notion, the notion of putting a, uh, a boulder, I wouldn't do a boulder, I think I'd...
What about those posts?
Yeah, I'd do something...
Probably like a bit, you know, like two or three of these.
Good guardrail.
Yeah, or some, something that would, uh, that would...
My concern isn't somebody hitting the building again, which would be your concern. It would be that, coming on a puzzle, you don't have that clear line of sight.
You wouldn't, Ken, if you turned around, you know, and showed, you're on here.
Yeah? Well, it doesn't meet the setbacks.
If the road commissioner would turn around and then, you know, put the stop, put a line...
White line.
Where the stop should be.
That's good.
Yes. And it's...
It's a bad intersection.
In a way, it's setback, more or less, probably, you know, at least 50 feet, 75 feet back from the intersection, you know?
From where the intersection should still be, but it doesn't meet the setbacks from the sides of the road. It's probably three or four feet from the edge of the paving, which from the center of the road, you're probably talking 15, maybe 20 versus the 75. So it would just be, my concern is just the town would have liability in the future if something happened there that they had the opportunity in 2014 to relocate.
My concern is, as long as there's room on the property to make this a conforming legal building, then that's what, that's where it should be. And 75 foot setback from the center line is, is what would take to make it non-conforming. Or to make it conform.
No, the problem here is that that's gonna be considerable additional expense.
It's very expensive.
Are you planning on putting a foundation under this? No.
No, we're gonna use the same, um, granite slabs that are there.
Are they dug into the ground or just more or less laid on the ground?
They're more or less laid on the ground.
So they can be more or less laid anywhere. And if you got an estimate for 75 grand, if you got an estimate for 50 grand, putting it right here, then for 50 grand, you can put it back here, 75 feet.
No.
Because if, if you're just laying these gran...if you're not digging and pouring a foundation...
Moving it, insurance adjusters.
If the floor's all broken up, then it's gonna always have to be, maybe taken apart to fix.
It's gonna have to be jacked up, and who knows what else could be found for repair on the inside too?
I don't know. I'm not, um... If there's room to put it back where it's not, where it's conforming, then that's all that I'm looking at. It's not, it's not listed as on the historical register.
No?
Yes, and it's not even listed on the main one. I understand that these schoolhouses are disappearing through fire or whatever. And, that's too bad. And this wouldn't have to disappear, it would just be bad a little bit.
Exceed my point of view, Chip.
I...I know where your house is at, and I know where the schoolhouse is. And it's still gonna be a schoolhouse, even if it's setback from the road. Just having it right down in the corner doesn't make it more of a schoolhouse.
It just loses its uniqueness by moving it.
Uniqueness, uniqueness, it was sitting there waiting for somebody to run into it.
But what would've happened, I haven't heard anybody even speak of it yet, but what would've happened if this person, you know, who hit the house was injured or was killed? Then all of a sudden, we're dealing with a whole different situation. I mean, if we talk about this thing and saying that we can move it and eliminate that possibility the next time...
But, again...
So, it's all about a thing. We're not even talking about a person who potentially could get...
Well, that could happen to anybody's house.
Right, and there are...
It could happen to anyone. Also, she was, and I am ever so grateful she was not hurt. I don't know how she wasn't hurt. But it was, um, I mean...
There's less chance of somebody slipping around that corner under poor weather conditions or whatnot and hitting something if something isn't there. and hitting something if the something isn't there. And if, if we don't, if we have the opportunity to make this building conforming, and we don't, then we don't really, it's going to be tough for us to tell somebody down the road, "You've got to move your cap back."
Well, this isn't a view, it's just...
Doesn't make any difference. It's a building, a structure, okay? You have to move your structure back to make it less nonconforming. Well, you know, you didn't do that here when you had the opportunity. It's just, it's much easier to deal with things that are black and white. And unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned, this is black and white. You've got room on the property to put the house and have the adequate legal setbacks, then I don't, I don't see, I don't see any problem. I mean, I see a problem, not for me, I see a problem for the aesthetics of where it was and its story and all that. But it's not swearing. Anybody else want to kick in? You did. Ken, anything else?
I think you already said it, there's room to relocate it, so, and that's what the ordinance requires. It's not that you're being picked on or anything like this. You guys do 25 to 30 from a year when you're going through these, so... And I would think this is part of the insurance claim, that the building needs to be relocated, and it's part of the claim.
And this was tabled, this discussion was tabled for one of the reasons was to get the opinion from the lawyer, correct? And the lawyer's opinion was...
If there's room to move it back, you should be removing it back, right?
Tom?
No, I was the one that...
No, no, I understand that, but I thought you had, I thought that's a rumbling.
I, my, the rumbling is just, it's a tough decision for us to make. I understand completely Dale's position here, but I also understand Chip's determination of the ordinance is dictating that we have to comply with the language that exists to cover this case, and which means that it ought to be moved back. Which is a shame, but I'm hopeful that insurance will, will cover that.
So what happens if I refuse to move it back? Do you condemn the building?
That's the selectman's preview.
It wouldn't be us anyway. It'd be code enforcement and then the selectmen.
We still have to make some sort of miracle figure for the wall to move the thing back or decide to anyhow.
To comply, I mean, minimal compliance setbacks, I guess.
Which is 75, it would be from each road, correct? Center line of Bustle and the center line of Youngs Ridge, whatever that line is, the house would have to be
Conforming?
Conforming. Just past the 75-foot...
It would move it just about halfway up my field, and it would look out of place. Completely out of place. That's why I invite any of you to come to my home. And you can see where it just does not. It belongs right on that little corner.
We wouldn't consider moving it back just enough to make the intersection visibly workable.
Again, I think if we're going to move it,
All right, okay, that's what I'm asking.
And we've got the room, then we have to move it to know what the setbacks are. I honestly don't, this isn't something that we can play with, because it's not like there's, if there was no room to go back real far, we'd try and push it back as far as we could. But there is room.
Right.
And we can make something that's nonconforming conforming. We can make it legal within all the parameters of the building or, the ordinance. And that's what we want, that's what we strive to do. Sometimes a little increments, like the people along the lakes, but situations like this, when you can make it totally legal, you know? I don't know.
So we probably have an extra dozen of these. You guys have a couple dozen to look at a year, but we weed out a lot of them. If there's room to move it back, they move it back, and they never make it to you guys. This one here is unique because it has the character and the historical aspect to it, so she wanted to talk to you guys about it.
Well, I get it. I understand. I have to ask.
I appreciate that because I do have a lot of passion for my little red schoolhouse. And I do feel very strongly, this is where it's always been, this is where it should stay.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, Ken. I'm still very, very confused, okay? I'm reading the ordinance. I'm no dummy, okay? And as I get down through section 1.4, nonconformities, then I turn around, and then once I get over to the section that you're talking about, you're in the shoreline. You're talking about setbacks, if it doesn't meet the setbacks from the water, then these, all these added things you want to add in there. I did turn around and say anything about that in the first sections, in 1.4.
It's not specifically shoreline, but it does include shoreline in the relocation of 50% or more damage. So that's, that's all property, including shoreline or RP.
Well, that's your interpretation. You know, why can't you turn around and be quoting, you know, 1.4, either 1.44, oh no, 1.43?
Or 1.411?
Well, the reason probably that I'm not is because there's room on the property to, that's it? There's room on the property to make this legal. That's what we do. We don't have to hem and haw if we can make something legal. That, that's, that's all. Anybody else? Yoli, anything? How was the game tonight?
Just bragging.
I mean, we do have the purview to say move it back 50 feet into the 75, but, but that wouldn't be as much as they could do. But we could, and we do have that purview though, don't we?
If we do, there are strings attached, though. There's this whole liability issue, because we could make it legal. And by not making it legal, we could open the town up down the road to, you know, somebody not wanting to move their place at all. Or somebody complaining that, you know, we, you made us do this one, you didn't make them do this.
Yeah.
We always try to strive to make something as conforming as we can. And if we could make, simply make this conforming by just saying, you've got room for the setbacks that you have to do. I mean, we've had people on the lake that their houses were in the water, and they wanted to relocate it. And it was a 100-foot setback, and they had enough property to move it back 100 feet, we made them move it back 100 feet.
True.
And they didn't like it, but as it turned out, it worked out well for them. So... And that's on the water, that's, we're talking big time money down there, not a $5,000 value evaluation. So we've always tried to make something as conforming as we can. And to make this as conforming as we can, 75 feet.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yes.
All I can say is, and...
Because I'm crazy.
I'm all, you know, willing to bet, you know, this would make a good court case, where you're taking something out of context, and you're applying something that concerns the shoreline zoning and setbacks from the water, okay? And you're trying to make, do that, make those requirements fit a non-shoreland.
No, what I'm trying to do...
Because as I say, it's right here. I'm not making it up.
I know you're not. But if we can make something conforming, see, this is also talking about nonconforming lots. This is, this lot has enough, it has enough square footage, correct?
Yeah, but there's no requirement to do that.
This is a conforming, yes, there is. We always have to make things as conform, we can't let something be non, we can't let something remain nonconforming if there's the opportunity to make it conforming.
That's your opinion.
No, no, it's in here.
No, yes, it says there...
It's my opinion, it's in here.
I know it, well, okay, I can say the same thing for the other section.
I hear you.
And, and if the sections allow it, then it isn't up to you to determine, I'll say, well, I don't agree with that, I want more.
I want it conforming, that's all I want.
1.411.12, is that what you're talking about that's for a shoreline? Because 1.411.3 does not say specifically for shoreline.
No, it says any nonconforming structure, including.
Your required setbacks are more by...
Clause any nonconforming structure would include Dale's structure.
How about 1.43?
We're looking at 1.411.3, because it really falls in there, and it does not say specifically for shoreline.
It does say that the waterfront setbacks are shoreline or resource protection.
But it's including that, it's not saying only that.
And 1.42...
The section that you wanted to round to validate yours, and I pick in the section, a set will validate that it's needed 50%.
It has to?
Make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept Ken's recommendation.
Which is?
To have them move the schoolhouse back to meet the setbacks, roadside setback requirement.
Is there a second? Bob, any further discussion?
Yeah, a question. I know sometimes we, when do we reduce the setback on order 50 feet, Ken?
That was the first thing I looked at. I was hoping that this was a nonconforming lot or on a private road, and the town...
It's neither, yeah.
She's got a real frontage and lot size, so that was the first thing I was hoping for.
And they're public roads too.
Correct.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor of the motion, which is Ken's recommendation, which would probably be at least 75-foot from the center of each road setback, say aye. All those opposed, nay? It's a done deal. I'm sorry, but it is what it is. Now, you can, I guess you go to the selectmen from us or the Board of Appeals?
Superior Court.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of.
They could go to the zoning board to get a reduction in the street setback or something like that.
But you have to show real hardship.
And you wouldn't be able to show the criteria for hardship, I don't believe. It's really, really tough.
So Superior Court is your next venue.
So now, what, you're saying, what's the setback going to have to be?
75 feet from the center line of the right of way.
Because I hope you know that if, we say if she did that, that would not change one iota the chance of somebody running into it and getting killed.
So, so, so the action that you've taken is not going to solve the problem that you thought that you're trying to eliminate?
No, what I'm trying to eliminate is the nonconformity of the structure. That's what I'm trying to eliminate, and that's, that's what we've done. Someone's going to drive a lot further in.
The concerns, the concerns that the members had in the last meeting, was if Ken turned around and put this scare tactic into them, that if they didn't turn around and make it, move it back, and if somebody else ran into that building, then the town and the planning board could be held liable for either the damages or...
That's, it's a, it's a possibility. But now, with having it back, setback 75-foot from the center line of each right of way, it's going to be an awful lot harder for somebody to drive all the way up there and hit the building. And because it's conforming, it's, it's off our, it's off our heads. So, we're scared for it.
Yeah, my only concern is that from being a member and a director on the active chaplain Historical Society, the other historic things, I, myself and the other members of the Historic Society, I just hate to turn around and see the thing going down one less...
Well, is it, is it the schoolhouse that's historic, or is it the location right on the corner? My, my...
Both.
Well, you've got, at least you've got the schoolhouse out of it anyway. So, you know, whether it's right on the corner or if it's up a little pathway, I mean, there are schoolhouses that weren't built right on the edge of roads. Some of them, you did have to walk up a path to get to it. And you've still got the red schoolhouse. It's, you know, that hasn't changed. It's still got all its history, it's just in a little different spot. Sometimes they move historic buildings to other towns, and they're still an historic building, it's just somewhere else. Anyway. Thanks for your, your passion, please. All right then. Number two. Was there copies of this? We are pre... Did you guys have a chance to read this? Now, this is what they first presented to us.
That's the guidelines from the D, from the shoreline zoning, guidelines from the DEP. So just, they had it in a different section of the ordinance. This would be right in the resource protection, and... I'm just going to pull out some of that flood zone stuff, because it really doesn't apply, but I think we'll leave it in because I'm not sure. If, if we took it out, we'd miss something, so that's what the state guidelines would be.
This year, pretty much just stayed. Yes, he did, but it was, it was, there was something funkier about it that had too many issues, that too many what ifs that came up. We just started off the top of our hats. This, I think they cleaned up since the first thing he brought to us.
This is what you had. Shoreland zoning.
Right.
It was just a proposed special exception.
That you, that you guys...
Committee considered and suggested.
Right, I got you. And this, but this would fall under order 4226 dimensional requirements? Okay, yeah, yeah, is it just like WRP? All right.
Chip, when we were thinking about this, Gavin and I have been talking about this a little bit at lunchtime. And the first notion I would, I would hope to share with the board is that I would wish that we could get, share with you some notion of the amount of thought that went into the consideration of this, number one, and it's, and it's the sense that it was not a good fit for acting. The reason being largely that we have had a track record of being very protective about water resources. And when we considered the wetlands of less than 10 acres, which was, there was a a state statute on the books at the time that said a 10-acre or larger wetland has a buffer of 250 feet. And when we talked this notion around at the committee that was revamping the shoreline zone guidelines in compliance with the, or in conjunction with the new suggested guidelines from the state, we just thought that's, that's a pretty high bar in terms of initiating protection at 10 acres of water. And, and we thought the compromise might be a sliding scale of protection that gave rise to that map up there, map two of two, where, and I've stated this before to the board, we use the formula of 10 acres yields 250 feet, so there was a... twenty-five foot per acre protection ratio, so we started at two acres of, of water, just giving the sense of, uh, you know, a significant amount of, of water, um, yielded fifty feet of setback, three acres would need seventy-five and on up to two fifty, not in excess of two hundred and fifty feet. And we based that partly on some beginning with habitat data, and just looking at the maps, you can see that in a large number of cases, the, the, the water that is retained by the wetlands, uh, often flows into a first, a first order stream, you know, leaving the wetland and finding its way down into the great pond or, uh, stream of some significance, so. It was, it was basically from the sense of, uh, setting a high bar on the water quality, and the, as we've seen in, in our stone water work, the, um, the best and least expensive, uh, tool that we can implement, uh, for protecting the water quality is a vegetated buffer. So we, we, uh, we're not too excited about this.
Right, but would this pertain more to, uh, RP that is, uh, forested? Not necessarily wetland, because we're not gonna let somebody build a steel house, but there, there's, there's RP, we've made new RP areas in town, and some of them encompass area that a house could be built on, especially if it meets these criteria here.
The, the thing that...
And it wouldn't be dealing with wetland necessarily.
Well, we did, it was soils, hydro soils is the other thing, the linear resource protection, right, it's a hydro soil.
Right, but test pits were dug all around town, you're looking at a soils market, if, if someone's gonna plan on building a home, then there's gonna be some test pits dug, so we know what exactly the type of soil is right in this spot here where this guy wants to build his house, and it may not, the hydro soil may not be an issue right there. I mean, we know that this whole area, the big map, yeah, there's mostly hydro soil, but there may be areas that there isn't, and if they can put in a septic system, you know, then, uh, I don't know, but I... I mean, how many of these, how many people have come to the town, do you know of, that have wanted to get permits and can't? And if that piece of land wasn't called RP, if it was called rural or something, would there be an issue there?
Uh, single-family houses, you're probably a dozen that have been told no, uh, sheds, barns, things like that, you're probably another dozen, couple of dozen easy up there.
But are we zoning to cover these exceptions to the rule, or are we zoning to, to cover what is commonly found in, in the town and, uh, you know, developing our sensibilities to, to protect those standards that are illustrated by the majority of situations? I mean, it's, that, that happens as a result of zoning, you have some people who are disgruntled, uh, by the, uh, impact that it would have on their property, but, um, this was, this was, uh, part and parcel of the package that was passed on, uh, September, I think it was, uh, September something, two thousand and... And nine twenty-nine eleven, I think it was passed almost unanimously at a town meeting. I, I just think it opens up a can of worms, instead of drawing a line in the sand now, we're kind of drawing a line in the mud.
That would only be though if they had no other place to build on their property. That you guys would have the opportunity to tell them where their driveway's gonna go, where their house is going to go, uh, how they're gonna mitigate stormwater, how they're gonna build the driveway, who's gonna do it, document the whole thing, and it, and it's going to allow them to use their property. That, that, that lot was created prior to zoning coming and, and basically taking their rights, so if I wanna use the scare tactics as I was accused of earlier, um, I think this is gonna be repealed. If, if you guys don't do something, I think you're gonna lose the whole thing, and this is a really good opportunity to, to keep it in place. Uh, by adopting this, you don't have to change the maps, you're not changing the buffer zone, you're still keeping your two acres, but you're allowing some of these people to use the property that they can't do anything with right now. So if there is a spot on their property that's out of resource protection, then they have to build there, they don't even come to you guys, they have to stay in that, out of that RP. If on their lot, they don't have any place except for in that buffer, then you guys would be able to condition them to death.
Kenny, just a note of explanation, on B, uh, the lot on which the structure is proposed is undeveloped and is established and recorded in the registered deeds before the adoption of the resource protection district. Would that be nineteen seventy-four in our case, or in the section of these...
I would build new, new resource protection, the latest resource protection. Then we can put a date in there instead of that, created prior to...
Or you can just say the latest, because it may change down the road.
New, new latest coming.
And then you wouldn't have to change this, it would just always be the latest one.
I'm gonna think that one through.
We don't want it to, for grand, it's a grandfather, right?
Maybe that September two thousand and eleven is, is the date we're talking about right now, isn't it?
I think it's on the map.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess I was, I was hopeful that we would not, you know, rush to judgment on this and, and maybe look at some, uh, some materials from the beginning with habitat maps and, uh, maybe just spend a little time looking at a map and getting a sense of, of what, what we're actually talking about in a, in our text here. I understand, you know, that, that bit of zoning did raise some hackles, but, um, it's taken three years and, and we have maybe twenty-four instances of, of issues. There's a lot of other lots that are, um, subject to that bit of zoning that it did turn out to be a problem.
A lot of people haven't realized that their whole house is in resource protection, just like the gentleman that just left, he just realized last month that his whole house is in resource protection now. So he's going to be along with his neighbors and everything, it's, it's just gonna build up more and more.
Uh, this is being presented by the selectmen as an ordinance change, correct?
Uh, it was given to me to take a look at from direction from the selectmen, but they haven't drafted anything. They're hoping the planning board takes it.
And this would be for the coming town meeting?
Correct.
And things have to be done by what, end of January?
Yep.
So there's not, if, if you, if you wanna peruse this, then we have to get to perusing it, if... Because it could certainly be taken out of our hands, I mean, other people can present, uh, uh, ordinances. They don't have to have our approval necessarily. Takes, it takes a, I think it takes a larger vote total or vote, uh, majority to, to pass, but if this, you know...
We would just either endorse it or not, that's all, that's our only function, we have no, uh...
Well, we could write it too. Right now, it's, it's just, you know, we could, we could, you know, clean it up and make it an ordinance and write it ourselves, and get in at what you want, or, uh, you know, if, if you don't wanna support a change, then that's fine too, but somebody else may, may bring one forward and then, you know, you have no opportunity to make, um, any kind of changes to it, or to, you know, have the planning board, right now, if something like this passed, the planning board would have an awful lot of say in what that person was gonna be able to do and, you know, the criteria they had to go through, um, if we had a hand in bringing the ordinance up.
Well, can we, can you show us, Ken, a, a couple of instances on that map that would, would be, you know, that you think are, are open to a fair consideration by the board or something?
Yeah, if you look on the map and it would be any lot that's fully covered with resource protection.
But all the RP lots aren't all wetlands, right?
Correct, they...
And, and this includes the buffers, correct?
They used to be all wetlands, but when the new ordinance came through, it's anything greater than two acres and it can be forested wetlands.
Right. And, and the buffer, now, is the buffer included in what we call RP or no?
Correct.
Yeah.
So it is, so that could be, well, then that, you know, and that may be more...
So the, the, the way this works is, this is ten acres, this is nine, this is eight, this is seven, this is six, five, four, three, and this is the cutoff. As I'm reading the, the draft there, this is where it starts to kick in, right? Or seven, or it has, has to be seventy-five, I think it said in, in that, the state language there. Somebody could read that.
It'd be two acres is fifty.
Right, but, but there's wording in the, in the...
In the document you gave us, Ken, in the last...
So somebody having a lot that's three acres, uh, it say a hundred foot, and someone having a lot that's three point one, it has, it's a, adds a whole other twenty-five feet to it, that's taken away from what he could use.
But in the draft, it says all structures except functionally water-dependent structures are setback from the normal high water line of a water body tributary stream or a planned edge of a wetland to the greatest possible extent, but not less than seventy-five feet. So, in a sense, if we were looking at, uh, what's in front of us here, it would only impact the things, uh... that are from yellow down to orange, from a hundred foot to two hundred and fifty feet, so to speak.
And that's what these things are? What exactly are...
No, that, this, this was a little work that we were doing to try and, uh, bolster the idea of protecting first order streams. We were just mapping first order streams, but this is the map that shows you better than anything else the areas of, uh, RP around water waters.
Well, yeah, it shows you the RP, but it doesn't really show you the varying buffers though.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, the different colors.
That's the hundred, two hundred.
Oh, 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 oh!
So if it's less than two fifty, it's just an act in ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it's two fifty, then the state was regulating and it was already there, but if it's less than two fifty, then that's one of the newer ones that came through.
And this, this is the, the bottom one, this is the two fifty, is that what this color is? That's the same thing? Which is what most of those are, is the two fifty setback.
Yeah, I mean...
Because it's shoreline, because it's around the lakes.
There's a lot of wetlands in this town.
Oh, yeah.
That's why we're considering this thing, but...
Yeah, but they're not constantly dripping wet though, they're, they...
A lot of them forested wetlands, there's no water on them whatsoever, just a poor soil.
Right.
Well, seasonally.
Uh, no, forested wetland doesn't have to be wet at all.
It's just poor soil and vegetation.
But, I mean, if it's, if it's, nine times out of ten, anything that's on this map has water in it at, at this time of year up through, you know, June, probably.
Those are low areas, the spring melts, those are gonna be the wettest areas in the town. For sure.
Is there examples of the fifties? Is that what the, the numbers?
Yeah, so it's just a small two acre forested wetland.
But if you look at some of those tiny ones, um, they're either, I mean, you, let's think of ones in our own neighborhood that we might know, you know, in the spring, if you hear, uh, peepers out in it and, and, you know, you're, you're familiar with the animal life or whatever life is out there, these things contribute, they're, they're repairing corridors for wildlife and, uh, you know, they're an important part of the landscape regardless. I would, I would advocate for considering some protection, I guess the, the notion of protecting it by...
Now, you know, we've got a slew of homes built right along Moose Pond here.
Yeah.
And then we've got all this area which was ready for development, we've got the subdivision that's back across, along in here and along the road here. And there's certainly places you can build a home along, close to the road here and not be infringe any on, and this is forested wetland right here.
Three acres of poor soil.
Yeah, well, it's growing trees like a son of a gun, so we're getting, uh...
Is that Peppin's?
No.
Coles?
You know, where an eagle's tree.
No, this, Peppin's is, uh, that's a sharp, this is, uh...
By the bigger house.
This is before it was a coal.
Yeah, this is where the wild...
In the pond area?
No, he's in the house.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Couple times.
And then, and then right along here, well, right along here, now, all this in here, there's nothing along here. This is all just, uh, in fact, they just cut this, they cut all this area last spring.
But the other side of the road, in the springtime, there's that laurel swamp that...
Right, and it's just this one little creek that runs down right along there and goes into the, uh, into the pond.
Well, I just, I would, I would suggest, it's gonna take a, it's gonna take a lot of field time for the planning board, that's, that's for sure.
Well, you see, uh...
Just fully understand what these areas are like, you know? I don't know if you've become more familiar with it.
Well, if, uh, where'd he go? If you had a, if you had a list of maybe half a dozen of these people that can't do us, and, uh...
Yeah, we could go through a little bit more.
Yeah, and we would take a day, just, or, you know, a half day, a couple hours, and just take, run out and take a look at some of these, so that they have an idea.
We have, we have to have these one accessory structures.
That's a possibility, you know?
If you look at the map, you'll see...
Because it gets colder, the ground's gonna get hard.
Many times, this, this will either be the source of water, or, or water will be flowing into it.
Those are water filters, you know?
Looks like this one, this one feeds into the wet...
Yeah, but...
This one here, which is, that must be a, yeah, that's a ten acre.
I've traveled into this one.
Yeah, that was its flow.
By handful, in places that only have...
A lot of water should be filtered the same way.
If we're...
That initial...
Well, that's one of my...
See, right now...
Valley, where's Apple Valley?
That's, that's...
Smiths and Rogers? Yeah.
Oh, that's probably going down to the, uh, Campsite. So this must be...
Yeah, the swamp on either side, before you get to Richard Neal, right, this is, uh, Milton Mills Road here, yeah. Richard Neal.
Before the school.
Right, yeah, right on that little slice of land, yeah.
Signature is not on file, and...
That's a, that's a big one.
There's a problem, we'll come back to it.
I mean, I guess I'm not advocating for a change of language per se, but I guess I would caution the board that, um, this will take, I, I'm thinking in fairness to the resource, it will take quite a bit of field trips to, to, you know, iron this out, better or better, this, um, in a sense that every, every instance that would fall under this, the purview of this exception would be kind of like, uh, the, um, worst-case scenario is of best possible locations, because every one of them is apparently in a resource protection area, you know, and there's probably a, a reason for that.
But these are some pretty strict conditions, like, do you think a lot of them would be needed out?
Yeah, there probably would be.
Well, is, is this some, is there anyone here that would want to consider this, what I do with it? This amendment, this change to the ordinance, or is everybody happy with things the way they are? And if that's the case, then we'll, you know, tell the selectmen that, uh, we're... And if that's the case, then we'll, you know, tell the selectmen that we don't want to make a change and, you know, do whatever they want to do.
I think it's fair for somebody that has an undeveloped lot to have plans before this was put into place and now they just have a lot that they can't put a home on. That seems pretty unfair.
Well, like I was asking Ken, if he could come up with a few of these places that people have come to the town and said, hey, all of a sudden I can't use my land or hey, I want to build a house and I can't. If we had some of these addresses and we could just go by and check out and see what it looks like so we all had a better feel for what we're talking about. Because I know we're not talking a swamp, because we're not going to build still houses, not yet. After global warming, you know, another 50 years we'll have to. Because it's going to run 600 feet, be that as it may.
You better be able to swim.
I'm a swim instructor, baby. My future is life. Anyway, if that's something you could do, and then we could schedule a date to go out and take a look, because now with all the trees cutting down and the leaves off, oh my God, you can see 100 miles of noise.
We'll just go to go down and just drive.
That's what we're doing exactly. Anyway, we need to get out of there. I was standing at the duck yet the other day, watching the trees out in the forest go like this and they get knocked out and drug off. I couldn't believe it. So, could you come up with a list by our next, our first meeting in December? And then we'll see what you map out, the best way to attack it, and then pick a day to go out and... Is that, how does that sound? Is that worthwhile enough?
Let me ask this question.
Oh, go ahead.
You want to do this, want to go out there and look? And I think we should. I guess what I don't understand is, when are we going to sit?
You're going to see a piece of land that if you didn't know it was RP, you don't know why somebody couldn't build a house or a barn on this piece of property.
So we're wanting to look at examples of RP properties, is what you're saying?
Yes. People that specifically come to town or come to the code office saying, I want a permit to do this and you can't, it's in RP. I cut the grass, how can it be, you know, whatever. I think if we had a feel for what some of these look like, you may think, oh, well, maybe something like this is worthwhile.
Ken, is the 75 feet under E, is that, that's generated probably from health, health and plumbing code laws relating to septic minimal setback?
It's the same setback from streams, the 75-foot shoreline zone.
But isn't there a bit of plumbing, what is that called?
It's 100 foot, that's septic and water.
Septic, yeah.
But they make a special exception, don't they, for, in some cases, with a certain design of septic field?
To reduce it, you'd have to get a variance from the state to reduce to 100 feet unless there was an existing system there. So the septic would have to be 100 feet away from...
But state laws, you could probably never go below 75 feet though?
No.
Even with the variance, okay, that's what I was trying to do.
Is there anything in this, right here, Tom, that you can look at and say, I don't like it?
I...
One, two, six.
The one thing I think would be important to maybe consider, and I don't really see it in here, would be the hydro soil issue. Because I don't think people should be building a dwelling, number one, in hydro soil, even if it's on slab. And nor should there be leach fields and septic tanks going in on hydro soils.
Is that something they can do?
Leach field, no.
It would have to all be, it would have to be a holding tank?
No, you'd have to have a septic system in it. So if you couldn't have a septic system designed, then you couldn't...
Right, and septic systems need leach fields, right?
Not because of your RP, it's just because the local lot's bad.
Right, so it, and that went back to what I was talking about before. I mean, if you can't get a septic in there, then you can't build one. No evans or buts.
Yeah, you guys won't have...
So to be able to put a, have a septic system designed for an area, then the designer has dug the test holes and realized that, hey, here's a piece of this property where we can legally put in a septic system. And it'll work right. So that means, I miss RP, here's a piece of land that'll maintain a septic so, you know, next to it I can put in a house or a building or something. Again, small, you know, 1,500 square foot, right?
That'd be maximum, yeah, and I think that's total, right?
Yeah, including overhangs.
Yeah.
So...
1,500 square feet, that's another one I would consider looking at. That's 38 by 50, excuse me, 38 foot square. That's...
That's going to include all the sheds and everything.
Oh, okay.
That's a total.
Yeah. It's like lack coverage.
Correct.
Or overhang coverage, actually.
Maybe a one-time. And they couldn't come back 10 years later then and...
Yeah, there'd be no 30% of that on this, right?
No. If they built the, well, no, they'd be able to go to 1,500. And that's it.
It's a lifetime.
And that's the other area we're kind of stuck in, is a lot of this new resource protection is, there's lots of houses in these areas. So you're up on Saunders Lane or Milton Mills Road. Now, all of a sudden, these people are biding by the 30% rule too. Which we haven't, I haven't looked at that to have that changed, but...
Milton Mills Road?
The gentleman that just left. If he wanted to do something to his house, he's 30%.
Is he?
Would be his maximum, yeah. But the ordinance says anything built after 1989, I have a lot of houses built after 89 because it wasn't resource protected. Now RP has come along, so there's a conflict in that.
Yeah, we'd have to get that date right too. I was maybe making two lenient.
Yeah.
Because that's what I do.
Yeah.
You know, me, give them the world, make everybody happy. So, why don't we do that? Why don't we have Kenny come up with a half a dozen places or whatever and we'll look them over next time and we'll pick a date to go march around in the slot.
I would move that we do that, but we table this for the 015 town meeting and we do that in the springtime. And it would be more sensible to actually assess the nature of the relation of the water on the land.
For all the... Yeah, I mean, the old 16 year?
Yeah, yeah.
Like...
I mean, there is a fairly high water table now, but it's not, it's not up to what it would be in the spring. I don't think anyway.
Yeah, but you could still tell by, if it gets that wet that often, you can tell by the...
Vegetation.
The flora.
Yeah.
What it's like. Because I've got pieces on intimate weather. I'm not going to tell you without it. But I can tell by the flora, even though it ain't wet right now.
Yeah, you're right.
And this is something I think that the selectmen, if we're going to do something, you know, if we get all our questions answered, I think they'd rather see it sooner versus later. It doesn't mean it has to be, but I'm just saying.
Something we were knocking around today was, and not to belabor this, but I'm fine with the field pointy, but I'd rather do it in the springtime. Because I think it would be more telling in the springtime. The assessor is going to have an interesting time with this because, as I understand this, Ken, this is not going to change the RP designation, right?
No, all the maps or anything. So when they came in for an abatement, because they can't build on their land, they would have to come through you guys. And you guys say there's no place for you to build on your land for them to be granted an abatement. So if they came in and their land is an RP, the process would be you guys would look at it for best practical location for, to meet that criteria. So they would be able to build, maybe not a big, huge house they wanted, but the 1,500 square foot.
Well, it's a quirk, the induction of this thing would yield you areas of resource protection with houses on it, which would have to be assessed as probably available to awaken lots of some day. I don't know how they...
Well, we've got that now. We've got homes that are in RP right now that get assessed. You know, whenever we delineate, do RP areas, there's some homes that fall within it.
Okay.
I'll make the list, find a half a dozen easy ones to come up with.
Sounds cool. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I got.
All right then. Anyway, guys, any break up? Have a good Thanksgiving. Good night, Cable Land, see you.